Let's call the meeting to order. And we will do an agenda check. Okay, good. Well, then we will move on to items from board members and general manager. Somebody's chewing. I can't call them. Oh. I'll throw at John Borowski.
Nothing for me that I can remember.
Frank or we're going to move down to Frank. John Brown.
I spoke at the Northeast Neighbors Meeting and the mayor was there and a couple of city councillors and things like that. He talked about natural gas ban and court decisions and all of that stuff. But she actually did. She did a good job of giving an overview of a lot of different programs going Eugene. And then my phone went up Saturday because we de-watered the Waterville Canal, Multiville Canal, and we created quite a lot of turbidity in the river. And that sat well with people on the river. And so I contacted Frank and Rod and they looked into it. And we suspect it was a gravel bar below the tail race where the fish passing. I don't know if you've ever seen it in there, but happened. But I would hope in the future that we could ramp it slower or do something. Because I know if anybody else created that much turbidity, I have pictures of it in the river, it probably have a fine. And I know we're doing it to the federal standards and everything, but that to me doesn't make it right. If we're creating turbidity in the river, especially right above our water intake, I'd hope we could at least be aware of that next time.
Attended the Jefferson West Side Neighborhood Meeting with staff presenting on all things EWEB. And I think you should significantly report, but good questions as always.
And then I attended the NAACP Freedom Fund Gallant with Commissioner Schlossberg. I also attended a Building and Trades Groundbreaking Ceremony at LCC, which is great because I think some of the, some of the work that they do might tie in nicely with what we do, so hopeful for that. And then just had a quick question about next door and if we have a public agency account. I noticed that some of the other government entities in the area have actual entity accounts and can post on there and share. And so I just wanted to raise that as something that I noticed and maybe if we have some kind of outreach we need to get out. Those are the things that I wanted to bring up this evening. And Frank, do you have anything?
Thanks, President Carlson. Good evening, Commissioners. Just a couple of things. We will follow up on the ramping and I know we have pretty strict procedures on that. And I'll just double check and see what the flows and process looked like. And so I'll confirm that for you, Commissioner Brown. I did want to thank Rod Price for filling in for me last board meeting while I was one in Washington DC, meeting with a lot of interesting people back there and witnessing some Senate oversight of FERC and some other things that were relevant to, to our business. And so appreciate filling in, Rod. Thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, and then we are doing correspondence then next. So if he has anything on the correspondence items and re-pressure. We had the legislative update and the water system development charges.
Yeah, just on the SDCs. When they, when they bring those back to us, it would be nice to see how they correspond to what we have now. And, you know, they're saying that if you build a smaller house, it's going to be less. If you build a bigger house, it's going to be more. What size house is where we're at now would be kind of good to know. And then also our, our flexibility on those to help incentivize housing. What kind of tools we have, you know, if we just put it in a straight methodology, does that give us any type of flexibility as far as incentivizing the help? So when that, when those come back, those would be some of the questions that I would have on that.
Frank?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Borowski. I know there's a few intents here. One of them is that the overall revenue requirement will remain the same. It won't be a direct apples to apples comparison because one is based on meter size, one is based on the size of the house. But we can do some relative comparisons to give you feel for the difference in, in different kinds of construction projects. And so now SDCs themselves are mandated by the state. And so we cannot, we cannot waive the fee. But we, we do in some cases for projects that have community good. We do provide grants that would typically cover a portion of the SDCs. And I'll, I'll make sure that when we bring that back in the fall that we discuss the different opportunities that we can have.
Thank you.
Any other, that's some correspondence? All right, well, then we were up to public input and we still have nobody that's signed over the link? Okay, moving right along then. And then we have the approval of Consent Calendar A. Will you wish to pull anything?
I move Consent Calendar A.
Wait a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Consent Calendar A, say aye.
Aye.
As is unanimously. And then we have Consent Calendar B. Would you like to pull anything? I actually wanted to do a quick question on the strategic plan. I'd like to stop them.
I'll move Consent Calendar B, absent the strategic question.
I'd like to poll number eight.
Draw with draw my motion.
Consent Calendar B minus number eight and 11. Wait a second. All those in favor of Consent Calendar B minus eight and 11, please raise your hands. Say aye. Okay, as unanimously. All right, let's go with number eight.
Thank you. So I know that this will come back at some point, but I'm not sure when it is. So under the schedule of cash reserves, and I'm, I'm on board with all of the raising all of these, these limits toward that, it makes sense. The question that I have was the working cash. We've got a target of, it was 3.4 in the water side, it was 3.4 million. We're moving it, we're moving some cash out, but we still have 5.1 million in there. And then I mean, so, you know, a million and a million seven. And then on the electricity side, you know, we have a target of 36 million and our balance after is 47 million of working cash. I'm just wondering where and at what time those funds get allocated to different, different. If it's not in reserves, it's to just stay in work. I mean, if, if we're above our target of working cash, what is the procedure for that money? So I don't know when that comes back to us or what.
Deborah, can I answer?
Yeah, okay. Good evening. So on the electric utility, those would be funds above target that we will be looking to spend on capital later this year because the electric utility is going to postpone borrowing because of its strong cash position.
Above and beyond the 15 million that we're already moving to, to capital reserve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so where does that? What, is that in the budget? Where do we see that that?
And so all of the capital spending is currently approved in the budget. But rather than borrow funds, we have cash on hand to pay for most of those projects or rather than borrow additional funds this year. So it's all spending that's already approved.
So, okay, so I guess my question is, is what is the policy for funds that are above the target in working cash? Is that internally directed or is that directed by the board? And if it's directed by the board, is it done during the regular budgetary process or when is it done? Because I mean, that's 11, that's $11 million.
So, so the board directs reserve transfers and the board approves the budget. So, but there's not a direct link to where that cash sits other than when we do move it into the capital improvement reserve, that does need to be used for capital. Unless the board makes a decision to move it out. So we can look out and see the spend that we have planned this year and want to leave sufficient cash balances to pay for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would just add, you know, working cash is, is specifically has inflows and outflows and it has revenue. And what we do each year is we go through and look for sort of abnormalities, low or high. And that's when we come back to the board and do the, the transfer of, of, of cash. Now, the fact that it's 15 million high doesn't mean we're going to spend 15 million extra. What we're spending is what the board approved in the budget. And as things flow in and out of that throughout the year, we could in the, in the year, above target or below target, depending on the revenue stream as well. Early cold winter would drive that number higher. A more mild winter could drive that number lower. And so it's really not like we're spending an extra 15 million. We're spending what the board approved, but that's the present working cash balance. And working cash gives us the most flexibility as opposed to if we moved into capital, then it's only used for capital.
And, and the only reason I ask is with some other budgets that I've dealt with, there was, there were policies for the use of the, the marginal beginning working capital is what I've always referred to it as. And it was like, this is what the policy is first, highest first use of it is this, 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 and it goes down. I just didn't know if, if we had a policy for that or if that was just directed internally.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Deborah. Also, what's working cash's impact on debt service coverage?
Our, well, debt service is our revenue. So that in as much as it came from excess of revenue and improves our debt service coverage. We pay our bills through our working cash. And so the, so the, the procedural way in which capital gets paid for is the bills come out of working cash and then, and then can be reimbursed through either bond funds or something like that, or the capital reserve, or if the board were to approve a rate stabilization fund. So to the general manager's comment is it is our most flexible form. And when we can see that we need to pay bills out of there later this year, we would tend to leave it there.
Any other questions? Okay.
The both together.
Together, okay. I have, okay, I had, and I have had one to potentially change on the strategic plan. If we're comfortable with that, then we can move to the next. So on the strategic plan, I asked about this in the pre-meeting questions. I was just curious if anybody else felt like on number 4.1, the opening says foster customer confidence. The A through E is delivery, safety and security, cost efficiency, service responsiveness and environmental responsibility. It's so closely aligned with the values that we have down below. I just wondered why the safety and security was not number one. It's very minor. I know it's very minor, but if others felt that way, I, I wanted to recommend that we move the safety and security to A. We basically just switch A and B, so the delivery is second. And otherwise, I have no other, I think the best that looks great. So thank you for the strategic plan. Like emphasizing that we put safety above other aspects. To the general. Other thoughts?
I would say unless staff object for some reason, I have the objection.
I don't have any objection. We could, we can make note that what you're proposing of President Carlson is that we basically switch item A and item B in section 4.1. And then the board through the process here would approve the revisions to the strategic plan, including that.
Okay.
As an I have a question also on that, on a different, on a different section of that. On the resiliency one, which is the mid-game number E or F, excuse me. It says, after the sentence, it says resiliency spine. It says, and develop generating resources capable of maintaining an emergency power. To me, that sounds like that's something we're going to do. We are going to develop generating resources. Should that be written a little different that says, look at the possibility of, of developing generating resources? I mean, the way it's written is like, we're going to, we're going to develop new generation resources. And I don't know if that's something that we have decided yet.
Optimizes. Yeah, I think the, the word in, in this case that you're, is, is develop. I think some of these come through partnerships, so they could be. You know, what, what we're trying to do there is to work on resilient spine and also be able to operate if we're going to go down. And that could be a relationship with other partners in the area. It doesn't necessarily mean that we go out and, and build a plant per se.
And that's why I have problems with the word and. I would say maybe and look for possibilities to develop or look for opportunities to develop. It just, when it says and develop, to me, that means you're going to develop.
Will we have those partnerships in place by 2024?
I suspect we'll have some potentially. The other option that we've talked about is block the ability to black start units, which would include our, our own generation as well as partnerships.
I just, just the way.
About we're spending here on off the, on the fly.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Quick suggestion, and develop generating resources or capabilities for maintaining emergency power? Does any of develop for?
I mean, is this, is this time sensitive? Could it, could you guys work on that and bring it back on Consent Calendar next month?
Dane. Generation.
Or would be.
It's not, it's not that time sensitive.
I just, the way it was written, I just saw it as a directive.
I understand. I, I think a probably a more appropriate phrase would be, I mean, we're really looking at evaluating and developing the generating, creating capabilities. Doesn't necessarily mean developing the generating resources, so.
And I'm fine with however you want to word it, but just and develop doesn't work for me.
Do we like what Frank just said? We could just have a amendment to it and pass it as is, how Frank just said it.
Wasn't there two revisions, yours and Frank's?
Yeah, just two.
Wouldn't we need to have a motion to revise? Because you bumbled with the budget issue, the cash reserve issue in one motion.
You can't do in both motions?
Yeah. You can procedurally, but historically we've done one at a time. It's up to you.
And we can do one, we can still do one at a time.
Yeah, that's fine. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve Consent Calendar B minus number 11.
Okay, all right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Consent Calendar B, number eight, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All right, all right, so next to the strategic plan then.
So I move to, to approve Consent Calendar with the strategic plan with the amendments put forward at this table. I'll let you guys put that in there. Is that okay?
Switching A and B in section 4.1, and I can't remember how I phrased it earlier.
But you'll, you'll know.
We've got a recording of it.
You'll know the, the justice of it.
I'll send a motion.
All those in favor say aye.
President Carlson, just to circle back with the board. I'll include the revised strategic planning correspondence next month. And if there's an issue, please identify it and we can make a correction.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
So as we read it.
Not through that. All right, so we are up at the hydrogen technology interests now. We're quite a bit ahead of schedule. Is that okay? I have a guest speaker. Okay. Michelle is on right. Okay, perfect. Well, Frank and Kelly.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kelly Hale. I am EWEB's climate policy analyst and advisor. I'm thrilled to be here tonight as part of a three-part presentation to talk about clean renewable hydrogen. I am joined with Michelle Detwiler, who is the executive director of the Renewable Hydrogen Alliance. She is joining us virtually. And also General Manager Lawson here, who will talk a little bit more about EWEB's interest in hydrogen. My part will be up first and I'll talk briefly about chemistry and equipment. We'll talk about colors of hydrogen, but really how that translates into carbon density and touch on equipment and storage. When Michelle talks, she'll talk a little bit about industry trends, leaders, opportunities and funding. And then we'll tie it all back together with connection to EWEB's hydrogen principles that you saw in the guidebook back in March and how that relates to EWEB's interests in this new clean fuel. So to kick us off with some basics, I wanted to just start with channeling our high school chemistry classes. You might remember the periodic table and the upper left-hand corner there, the elements of hydrogen. It's the simplest, lightest, most common element in, on earth. It's non-toxic. And one of the coolest things about it is that when it reacts with oxygen, it releases energy and creates pure water. So that chemical formula there just shows the benefit of how we can use this plentiful element in order to generate energy. So this is a very busy graphic and I'm going to walk you through it. It actually, if any of you have been following the news, maybe you noticed that yesterday, just yesterday, I think in preparation for tonight's meeting, I think they had it all planned. The United States Department of Energy just released the National Clean Hydrogen Strategy and Roadmap. So this is a version of a graphic that they have included in that document. You'll notice that up here, there's this big hydrogen symbol and that hydrogen has many applicable applications, right? This is a very versatile potential fuel. And so you'll notice on this side here that there are a number of different applications. Hydrogen can be used in many different forms, from transportation to industry, to fertilizer, to metals refining, to heating, to a number of different things. So it's very versatile in its end uses. And another way that it's versatile is that it's also very versatile in how it can be made, right? So we can use many different types of energy to create hydrogen. You can use electricity from a variety of sources and that can be directly generated. So it can be directly connected to wind or solar or a number of other renewables or nuclear power. Or you can use fossil fuels to generate that. Or you can actually connect it and just use grid-powered electricity. So you'll notice the direction of arrows on this left side, you know, going into the generation of hydrogen and moving here. And then you'll also notice that once it's in hydrogen, it actually can go back and generate electricity again. So you can use electricity to generate the hydrogen, then you can use the hydrogen to generate electricity. There are energy losses along that path, but again, it's very versatile. So one of the things that, you know, the, that US Clean Energy, excuse me, the US National Clean Hydrogen Strategy and Roadmap, the very first takeaway, there's three kind of strategies that are outlined for, for the US approach to hydrogen. And the first one is to really target strategic, high-impact uses of clean hydrogen. And really that's talking about where electricity is not an option to decarbonize. So that report talks about industry uses, high, heavy-duty transportation and long-duration storage. So moving right along, you might have heard a lot about colors of hydrogen. And so here I have a graphic that shows there's a variety of different colors here. That's the terminology section where that red circle is. And really what that does is it connects how, because it's such a versatile fuel, you really have to know, when you say hydrogen in one place, you have to know what kind of hydrogen you're talking about. And so the colors were intended to help you differentiate between how one type of hydrogen could be produced compared to another. So you'll notice that the terminology is tied to the feedstock that generates the hydrogen in the first place. So green hydrogen comes from wind, solar, hydro, geothermal, title, those renewable sources, right? Black hydrogen typically comes from coal. So they try to align those colors with the type of fuel that it comes from, but that's really what that is referring to. Now, you'll notice that the bottom of this chart shows that there's, well, the chart can be split into these two components, right? So you can produce hydrogen via fossil fuels and you can also produce hydrogen via electricity that could come from fossil fuels or from renewable sources. And so that's kind of the, the differentiating component here. And if you think about EWEB's interests, you know, you'll hear a lot about the particular type of technology a lot called electrolysis. And we'll touch on that in a moment, but the reason we are an electric and water utility and we'll show a graphic on how this works. But electrolysis takes electricity, splits a water molecule and produces pure hydrogen. So as an electric and water utility, that obviously makes a lot of sense. And so you'll hear us talking a little bit more about electrolysis than some of these other forms or technologies of producing hydrogen, and that's the reason. Another reason is that electrolysis, you can pair with those zero-carbon electricity generating sources to produce a carbon footprint from hydrogen that is very small to zero. And if we are intending to use hydrogen as a solution to climate change, especially for those hard-to-electrify parts of the economy that have few other options, this is especially important to make sure that the type of hydrogen that's being used is as low-carbon as possible. All right, so I mentioned electrolyzers or electrolysis as the technology. And electrolysis is using a piece of equipment called an electrolyzer. And you might have also heard about different types of applications that use a piece of equipment called a fuel cell. And I just wanted to put this up here so that you can see the differences and the similarities between the two because they're really kind of the inverse of one another. So let's start with the process of electrolysis or the piece of equipment called an electrolyzer. You use an electrolyzer to generate hydrogen. You put electricity and water in and it's a process that produces pure hydrogen and oxygen as an output. So you use electricity to make hydrogen and that's a process if you want to generate some of that hydrogen. A fuel cell on the other side is used in the end applications most commonly. So you might see it in a backup energy generation site for stationary sources as an alternative to a diesel generator. Or you might see it in a vehicle, a fuel cell vehicle. And it's kind of like an electrolyser in reverse. It takes hydrogen and oxygen in and it produces, it uses electricity. It produces electricity and it, as a byproduct, has water as a byproduct, right, pure water. So you use the, it makes electricity using the hydrogen and no combustion is involved in this process. Happy to take questions at the end if there's anything that comes up about that. So just quickly, again, back to those colors. The industry is actually moving away from the colors. So if those colors are confusing and you can't remember the difference between pink and turquoise and green and yellow and whatever, that's okay. Don't spend any time focused on that because the industry is really moving towards, what is the carbon intensity of each of these different types of hydrogen? And so when you think about carbon intensity, I wanted to just call your attention to two differences, right? When you think of carbon intensity, you're trying to understand in all the stages of the production of hydrogen or the use of a hydrogen fuel, where are the sources of emissions coming from? And there's kind of two sets of boundaries you can think about when people. And there's kind of two sets of boundaries you can think about when people talk about the life cycle, carbon intensity of a product, right? And so in this particular example, you might hear in the Inflation Reduction Act, there was a provision, Michelle will talk about this briefly, for a new tax incentive called the Production Tax Credit, the PTC. It's an incentive for producing hydrogen. And that actually only takes into account the carbon intensity up to the point of hydrogen production. So if you think about this diagram as being the entire life cycle of the production of carbon, you've got the clean energy generation, you've got the water, they come together. They, you know, you use electricity to split that water molecule in the green hydrogen production. Then you might have some storage, or you might have some transportation, then you have the ultimate use of that hydrogen. So in the example of the Production Tax Credit, the carbon intensity of that is really only measured up to the point of production. That's one example. Another example, though, takes into account all steps in the production of hydrogen, so the full life cycle. And the example here is the Oregon Clean Fuels Program has an opportunity where you could use hydrogen in the application of a transportation fuel. And in that case, what they're measuring is the life cycle impact of the hydrogen through all stages of the life cycle, through the use and transportation and storage. Michelle will talk a little bit more about this, but I just wanted to give a quick visual. Sometimes it's hard to understand what equipment is involved in hydrogen production. And so again, this is focused on that electrolysis pathway, that particular technology. There are lots of other ways to produce hydrogen, this is one example. But in that method of using an electrolyzer, you have some sort of electricity components. Maybe you're transforming high voltage transformer to medium voltage and bringing that into your electrolyzer. You've got some water treatment here, and then you bring that water into the electrolyzer. You split the water molecule apart. You purify the gas with that gas purification equipment. And then you either consume that gas, or you have to compress the gas. And then you either store that gas, or you use it in its end form, right? So there could be a liquefaction equipment that's not shown here to turn it into a transportation application, to get it even colder so that you can compress more of it and get a higher quantity into a smaller space. You might have fueling equipment to put it into a vehicle or to use it on-site in different applications. You might have long-term storage. All of those are different pieces of equipment, but this kind of gives a snapshot of some of the types of equipment that might be involved. And the last thing, or second to the last slide I'll leave you with is just, when it comes to storage, there's kind of two main ways to think about storage of hydrogen. And when General Manager Lawson will talk a little bit more about EWEB's interests, one of those things is really about how do we make use of intermittent electricity sources? And the storage component is one of the things that could make hydrogen very attractive, to take intermittent electricity sources and firm that up into something that's more dispatchable, that we can use at those peak times. And so there's two kind of main ways that you can think about hydrogen storage. There's physical-based hydrogen storage where you either compress or get it really cold and liquefy the hydrogen itself. And that can be very energy-intensive, and it can be hard to keep it in that cold state and not lose it. There can be higher losses in those storage mechanisms. And so for long-term storage, there are some challenges there. The other opportunity is to turn hydrogen, pure hydrogen, into what they call a material-based storage technology. Or sometimes you might hear the terms intermediate chemistries or hydrogen carriers. Those are all terms that really get at, how do we take pure hydrogen, do a chemical reaction to turn it into a storage mechanism that you could use at room temperature, that could be transported more easily as a liquid, those kinds of applications? And then you'd have to go through another process to again, then remove the hydrogen atom from that molecule to get it out of that hydrogen carrier and then be able to use it. But it allows for a longer-term storage capability. So then just because, you know, as your climate policy analyst, I've been talking a lot tonight about the climate implications of hydrogen. There are other sustainability considerations to be brought into consideration here from the triple bottom line of economic considerations, social considerations, environmental considerations. And oftentimes, it's helpful to not think about hydrogen just by itself when you're comparing these things, but to think about it in comparison to an alternative fuel that you might be deciding between. So I just wanted to add that. I'd like to take a moment now to just introduce Michelle Detwiler. I'm going to turn it over to her. And just before that, I want to just review a couple of quick takeaways from my section of the presentation. So number one, hydrogen is versatile, right? It's versatile in how it's made and it's how it's used. And so if you think you know hydrogen because you've studied a particular pathway, there's so much more to know. And so if somebody comes at you and says, I don't like hydrogen because this, there's lots of variation. There's lots of ways to think about changing those characteristics and doing it in a different way. So keep in mind of that versatility. And most of the hydrogen today is high-carbon. So the second takeaway is that keeping emissions low during the development of this emerging industry is going to be really key. Low-carbon options are emerging, and they are very promising. So now I'd like to turn it over to Michelle for the second part of the presentation. Michelle has 30 years of experience in the energy sector. Her work has primarily focused on government affairs and policy. She's worked for law firms, utilities, including here in Oregon, Pacific Corp., and energy-efficient building products manufacturers. She's been the executive director at the Renewable Hydrogen Alliance for the last two years. And RHA's mission is to promote using renewable energy to produce hydrogen and other climate-neutral fuels to replace fossil fuel consumption. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. So let's, next slide, please. So when we talk about why hydrogen, and before I get into that, I want to sort of expound on some of the things that Kelly mentioned. The simplest way to think about hydrogen is hydrogen is a molecule that is always attached to something. So the, you know, she was describing the electrolyzer in the electrolysis process. What electrolysis does is really just separate that hydrogen molecule out of the water. And in the different colors of hydrogen, so if you're using fossil fuels, steam methane reformation pulls the hydrogen molecule off of a hydrocarbon. So really, no matter how you make it, hydrogen is hydrogen is hydrogen. The hydrogen itself doesn't change. The only thing we're thinking about changing is how we get that molecule and how we use it. So with respect to the urgency and why so many people are talking about hydrogen these days, why is it this hot topic? And it's because we have a climate emergency on our hands, and we need to have as many tools to decarbonize economy-wide as we can possibly get our hands on. And hydrogen is a very promising pathway for that. So speaking from a policy viewpoint, there are policies up and down the West Coast, but, you know, including in Oregon, where we are trying to decarbonize the electricity sector. We're trying to decarbonize the transportation sector. We're trying to decarbonize the industrial sector. So again, hydrogen as a fuel and hydrogen as an energy carrier is proving to be a very feasible, practical pathway for that. So there's all kinds of requirements in those climate policies. We've got 100% clean electricity. We've got cap and trade, well, cap in Oregon, and lots of other things that are driving this decarbonization. So we use about 11 million tons of hydrogen in this country every year. And what we want to do is we want to not just clean up the way we're making the hydrogen and the hydrogen that is used for all those applications like fertilizer, oil and gas refining, metals processing, et cetera. But we want to, again, we want to use cleaner hydrogen for those things, and then we want to use that clean hydrogen for other applications. Next slide, please. And Kelly also touched on this a little bit. So some of the energy applications for hydrogen are things like avoiding curtailing valuable renewable energy. So if you have a renewable energy project, particularly a utility-scale energy project, you want to be able to preserve the value, not only of the asset, but of the energy that you're producing from that asset. And, you know, as many of you probably know, you can blend hydrogen into natural gas to reduce the carbon intensity of the natural gas system. Kelly also talked about storage. This is where I think hydrogen really shines. Unlike a battery, and the pictures here really sort of stand out with regard to how much energy can you store in the hydrogen, in hydrogen molecules? So you get a battery, the largest battery storage facility in the country. This is in Northern California. You're getting 129 megawatt hours. And frankly, you know, most stationary batteries for utility scale, you get about four to six hours. Hydrogen you can store for months on end and always, you know, and use it to either, it's not temporally constrained, like you can use it anytime, and it's not locationally constrained. You could put it in a pipeline, you could put it on a truck, you can get it to somewhere else. You could use it as a transportation fuel. And one of the key benefits is grid resilience and flexibility, as I think Kelly mentioned also. Electrolyzers can ramp up and ramp down within seconds. And forgive me if many of you already know this. And that's where sort of the balancing benefit of hydrogen really comes into play. Producing hydrogen via electrolysis really comes into play. If you've got a lot of intermittent resources on your system, you know, very variable, if you need to absorb some of that electricity, you can turn that electrolyzer on right away. And, you know, in the case of, for instance, and I'll talk about this later, in hydropower facilities, what some utilities are looking at as far as putting electrolyzers on their system is when you avoid those ramp, that need to ramp up and ramp down, your firm generation resources like a hydropower dam, you're actually preventing, you're probably reducing the amount of maintenance you need to do on turbines, because you're smoothing out the way they operate.
Keep paused for a second.
Am I coming through okay?
Yeah, you are.
Am I glitchy? Can, I can turn off my, I can turn off my video if that's better.
Okay, we can try it. It was fine there for a bit, and then all of a sudden it got.
Okay. All right, so I apologize. I'll turn off my video to try to save bandwidth here. On the transportation side, these numbers up here are pretty much, almost all California. They are the most advanced hydrogen economy in the United States so far. But this is the versatility, as Kelly mentioned, of hydrogen for specifically transportation applications. These are really hard to decarbonize types of transportation, the heavy-duty vehicles, the ships, and in aviation. Next slide, please. And in fact, there is one hydrogen fueling station for public transit, and I think it will also serve passenger vehicles in development right now on I-5 in Schehalis, Washington. So, but so far, that's the only hydrogen fueling station being contemplated up here in the Pacific Northwest. Here are some of the regional industry leaders. I would frankly consider EWEB, because you are looking at it, you are focused on it. I would add you to this list. But these are all the, some of the entities in the Northwest that are really moving forward with this. Plug Power in particular, what a lot of people don't know is for warehouse distribution and for material handling, most of the forklifts in Walmart warehouses, Costco warehouses, Amazon warehouses are all fuel cell electric forklifts. Because what they found is that these entities, these warehousing, these retail establishments can save millions of dollars a year by converting their forklifts to fuel cell because they're not, they don't have a bunch of, like, half their fleet down charging and unavailable for use. Next slide, please. And when it comes to funding opportunities, where is all the money going? Well, most of the money is coming from the federal government at this point. There are probably, oh, so wait, I'm a slide ahead of myself. So here's where some of the future opportunities are happening. As you may have heard, there are two hydrogen hub proposals currently under consideration with DOE and the Pacific Northwest. The first one is a multi-state. The second one, being done by Obsidian Renewables out of Lake Ossie. They are mostly Oregon and Washington, and that is a hub idea that's centered around fertilizer production and sort of a pipeline system that would go through both Oregon and Washington. There is currently a joint, three-state joint application for hydrogen fueling infrastructure funding under the federal, if I get this right, charging and fueling infrastructure grant. There's another name for it, but anyway, it's one of the grant programs that came under the bipartisan infrastructure law. The EPA power plant rule, that was just announced about a month ago, that's a rule that's going to require the decarbonization or the lowering GHGs and carbon dioxide emissions from natural gas plants and coal plants. So there's going to be a particularly large demand for hydrogen as hydrogen is a compliance pathway in that power plant rule, particularly for, mostly for natural gas plants. PGE is looking at converting their Boardman Coal Plant to combust hydrogen. So unlike a fuel cell, this is where hydrogen would in fact be combusted in turbines, much like a natural gas generation electricity power plant. The Port of Portland is looking at decarbonizing its parking shuttle fleet by converting to hydrogen fuel cell buses. And then there is a project happening in Portland, a partnership between OSU and Daimler, to develop probably one of the furthest-range, heavy-duty, Class 8 trucks on the market. Next slide, please. Here's where we're talking about money. So some of the momentum on the hydrogen, all the hydrogen excitement and all the developments and all the activity happening now is because the federal government has really taken the lead in lots of initiatives that it has, trying to get the cost of hydrogen down, the hydrogen hubs program, the production tax credit, as Kelly mentioned. There's just hundreds of millions of dollars being made available by the federal government to D and project development. The production tax credit is the thing that is really in historical, everybody keeps referring to it as a revolutionary, historical game changer in the market. So it's a tiered production tax credit. You may know energy production tax credits from wind and solar. So wind and solar projects are still getting production tax credits from the federal government. And now it's kind of hydrogen. And now it's kind of hydrogen's turn. So tiered level goes from the, I think the lowest level is about 20 cents or something and then it goes all the way up to $3. So the cleaner your hydrogen, the lower your carbon intensity of your hydrogen, the more valuable that production tax credit becomes. Washington, you know, I know we're not in Washington, but sort of comparatively speaking, when it comes to kind of what the states are doing on funding opportunities. We, RHA, did propose two bills during this Oregon session to develop pilot grant programs for fuel cell backup systems, backup generation systems, so replacing diesel engines. And also in the transportation sector, fueling infrastructure and vehicle deployment in the state. I don't, given what the Oregon Legislature is doing these days, those bills are not going to advance. But Washington, Washington is second to California as far as hydrogen tax incentives, supportive hydrogen policy, they're probably, by December, they will have, I think, what is the first official state level hydrogen strategy. So they're moving much more quickly. But there are some things, some funding opportunities in Oregon where hydrogen fuel cell vehicles, there's an option. You can, the battery electric vehicle still is getting the lion's share of that funding. But we are constantly, you know, sort of always raising our hand up and saying, don't forget about fuel cell vehicles. So the Clean Fuels for a Charge Ahead Program rebates and Advanced Clean Cars and Advanced Clean do include zero emission vehicles and hydrogen fuel cell vehicles are considered zero emission vehicles. So we certainly hope that eventually there will be more of a balance in those kinds of programs to really profile and support the hydrogen technology. Next slide. That's, I think that's probably it. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So go ahead with the next slide. I'm just going to close this out. I know we're running a little bit over on time, so I'll be pretty brief. This isn't a sales presentation, although it sounds a little bit like a sales presentation because it's pretty exciting to think about the technology and all the different applications. Really information, I know the board has asked for information on hydrogen and we wanted to respond. But I wanted to reiterate what EWEB's interests have been and in fact, very consistent with other electric utilities as well. And these really four areas have been what we've kind of told people either inside or outside the industry for a number of years. The first one is around the secondary market application. As we add more renewables to the system, getting value out of those instead of curtailment makes a lot of sense for the industry, including potentially EWEB's addition of resources or procurement of resources going forward. It really makes a significant difference as you build out resources, if you can use those assets the most effectively. And so the secondary market is part of it. I think both Kelly and Michelle talked about hard to decarbonize areas, not that necessarily EWEB would be a leader in that, but it's a recognized, it's something that we recognize when we talk about helping customers decarbonize. This is an area where hydrogen has some potential because of its flexibility. The last two are really the ones that probably hit closest to home, local grid support. You saw the diagram where you can actually use electricity to create hydrogen and also use hydrogen back in fuel cells to support the grid. This can be potentially used for demand response, load shifting, dealing with peaks, also potentially offsetting investments in capital that you might have to do in your distribution system, for example. And so this is an opportunity, I'll call it intermediate term storage. I know Michelle talked about long-term storage. I think from our perspective, we might evaluate opportunities from an intermediate type of storage perspective, more than four hours, but less than months. So depending on how we want to integrate the few ends of the spectrum that are both becoming more dynamic, the generation side and also the consumption side. And this is a clutch between those two. And then finally, resiliency, I think it was mentioned, looking at this as distributed energy source, it's carbon free. It can be a backup fuel, resiliency is an important part of our strategy. And I'll mention that these have come up because we're keeping an eye on that. We felt like this wasn't something, we did an economic study, I think it started back in 2017 when we procured a study to look at some of the economics and some of the trends. We have followed it since. We have included in the climate guidebook certain principles around policies. I think some of them were mentioned, really to look at hydrogen across its spectrum from a carbon perspective is one of the principles, for example. Not eliminating it as a choice when it comes to technology choices and some of those things. So you see some consistency with these four items. But these, I think we've been pretty consistent with our interest in it. I think you maybe have a little feel for why we've had an interest in it. When you see it evolving in California, you see it evolving in Washington and you see it evolving probably even more in Europe where we see more advanced application of it. And so I'll just finish with that and turn it back to you, President Carlson. I know we've run a little bit over, so if you want to extend some time for Q and A, most of this is really for you to ask questions and make comments.
We have nine minutes on the clock, but we are ahead by 40 minutes. So let's see how many questions we have, we'll go through and I'll ask if we want to do another round. So who wants to start in the queue first? John Graham?
I don't care who answers these. What's the oxygen out of the process? The hydrogen goes one way and the oxygen goes the other. Does that come out industrial brake, combustion brake, can it be used medically? Or is that just a byproduct that goes back into the atmosphere?
Michelle, I'll let you take that one and then I can add to it.
It can be vented to the atmosphere or there's even some talk about using it, injecting it into, back into the water for like fish habitat benefits.
So it sounds like they haven't really thought it through yet. That's kind of what I'm hearing. How adaptable was the transportation sector to hydrogen conversion? I know converting the heavy trucks like propane and things like that, it's pretty easy combustionation. But how adaptable was the transportation sector to hydrogen technology? Does it take a whole new transportation fleet or is there existing transportation infrastructure adaptable to this technology?
It's a combination of both. Oh, I was just, so you have brand new fuel cell trucks, but you also can convert heavy duty trucks to do actually a combination of hydrogen and diesel. Or there's some companies that will put in a hydrogen combustion powertrain in a truck. So there's some options available.
And real quickly, how does the PTC or PTL work, the tax credit? Is that like Betsy where, you know, people like myself could buy the credits and then, I mean, I pay $50,000 to the school district, they give me the solar credits and I get $100,000 tax break. Is that the same concept here about generating private sector investment? Or how does this?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, production tax credits is probably more similar to what we saw in the solar industry through the years.
The Betsy program?
Yeah, I would say more, it's probably more on a mass scale. Because of the large capital investments, I don't think it would be something that someone would typically put in their house, for example. So it's probably more on a utility scale.
But that would be available to the private sector if they wanted to invest in it?
Yes.
Because I'm all in on this technology. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation. I'm somebody that told you I was completely ignorant about this, so I really appreciate you doing a bit of a deep dive. My first question is, what is the scale that EWEB is interested in getting? Are we thinking that we would build a plant, we buy shares in a plant, kind of like how we do with the wind farm? What is our involvement like?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll give you the depends answer. I think what we're trying to do with our, kind of the alignment with the strategy and the involvement of the technology is to see where it falls. We did participate with some others in the hydrogen hub application from a research perspective. It was a non-committal role that we had where we were going to look at what, how would production in, with our fleet of generation work to improve our economics? For example, I see direct ties with resiliency. But I think the scale of that is going to be determined by a few different things and the economics is a big piece of that. As this evolves more, capital costs will come down. There'll also be a little bit better understanding of the carbon laws and the carbon accounting of it and some other things. So it depends a little bit. I think we're interested. But it's not something that I plan to be coming to the board saying, you know, here's this $10 million opportunity tomorrow. I think we'll have to see how the economics develop and align with our strategy. So I think we're interested, but I don't expect a big bang to, it's a bad analogy. This will be more of a, I think, an opportunistic evolution.
Great. I have a question with the project that had been proposed with Northwest Natural, but then I know they withdrew their proposal. So was the idea behind that, that they were going to develop their own hydrogen system and that EWEB would sell them?
Yes, it's exactly that. EWEB's role in that project was to provide electricity, to provide water and to provide some space. At all of those, at retail rates, we were not looking to subsidize their project from an economic perspective. Our interest in that was to understand the actual production of hydrogen and the impacts it would have on both the electric and the water system from an operational perspective. But they were going to, they were going to, it would be involved with their own production hydrogen. And in their case, they were looking to blend it into the natural gas system as part of the end use.
Just one quick question. When we were talking about doing the pilot project with Northwest Natural, we had a group in town who raised concerns about hydrogen being injected into the natural gas system and the potential for ill effects at use phase where somebody's cooking or heating their home or heating water with it. Do we have any concerns or awareness of potential negative effects of adding a percentage of hydrogen to the natural gas system? I'm not advocating we do that necessarily. I'm just curious if there's a, yeah, if there's potential ill effects there.
Yeah, and Michelle has some of the science. The issue was really about the NOx levels that were a byproduct of the flame of a blended hydrocarbon hydrogen product. That was the concern in the community. And Michelle has some of the science on that and Frank, I can.
I'll listen to her first.
Michelle, do you want to talk about the science?
Sure. So there's lots of research being done at PNNL and other federal labs about controlling the NOx. And the NOx emissions, for instance, in a residential blended natural gas service would largely be related to the flame speed. So it gets a little technical, but it's controllable. Also, Northwest Natural was going to blend an amount that was just 5%. And the testing has shown that you can get up to 20% hydrogen, 80% natural gas with, you know, the appliances can handle it. And there isn't, there isn't substantial concerns about NOx emissions. So that's where the science is right now, but it's continuing to evolve.
So a follow-up question, and my understanding is that currently with the natural gas supply system, you can't really put more than 20% of hydrogen into that pipeline effectively anyway. Is that right?
Yes and no. I know that Northwest Natural, because they have the most modern and tightest system in, one of the tightest systems in the country and because of the material, they're newer pipes. They actually believe they can get up to 35%. And there are, again, there's lots of testing going on around the country. Constellation Energy just successfully tested a blending of 38% in their system.
With no ill effects to the distribution system?
Correct.
I'm excited about this. I'm excited about the opportunity for the tax credits and the funding coming from the federal government to make the economics of this more palatable. I think that that's something that our utility is, my limited knowledge of this utility, seems like we're poised to be able to do that. What with the type of generation we have, the contract we have with Bonneville and our low carbon and rather than selling, selling power in the open market at a rate where we can make more money with the tax credits and the hydrogen that we're producing on off-peak at times, I think is something that I'm really excited about. One of my questions was, when we talked about storage for the, on the on the utility size, you know, you showed the big bank of batteries. Are there fuel cells that can do high megawatt outputs? You know, you think of a fuel cell and, you know, it might put out one or two megawatts. But, you know, under a peak load, if we're saying we want to use this during peak, we might need 10 or 20 megawatts. Are there fuel cells that are capable of those types of input and outputs today?
I believe there are, there are lots of very large facilities that have stationary fuel cell backup systems. But we can certainly, you know, Ballard Power, which is, I'm right here in Vancouver, Canada, right now at a conference and I'm sitting in the cradle of the fuel cells. So this is where Ballard Fuel Cells, it's been around for 40 years, is headquartered. And I can certainly ask for more information on sort of what is the largest stationary application. Fuel cells can be stacked to meet whatever load is needed to be met. But I do not know, offhand, I don't know what the largest stationary power setup is at this point.
So they may, we may be able to get to there, but it would be similar to like those battery things. You'd have several fuel cells that are in series.
Yeah, and Commissioner Barofsky, when I looked at some of the, I looked actually at Ballard when I was looking at some of the resiliency opportunities and it was at a substation sort of voltage level, you could stack them. So, which is for us, it's 12,000 volts. It's distribution level. Now, if we were looking at larger levels, we'd have to, I'd have to investigate that further.
And then the last thing, and this might be for Michelle, is the tax structures are incentivizing cleaner hydrogen. Are they going to disincentivize dirty hydrogen? Are we going to say that if you're going to use dirty, produce and use dirty hydrogen, it's going to cost you $5 a gallon for that hydrogen as opposed to when you're purchasing it? If it's green hydrogen, it's going to cost you $2 a gallon. So then there isn't an incentive out there just to build a hydrogen buoy that we may see coming?
The point is, so there isn't any active or, you know, specific disincentivizing of dirty hydrogen, so to speak. But the hope is to get clean hydrogen at parity with fossil-based hydrogen at this point. Parity cost.
And I guess my only concern about that is, is if we're looking at parity, And I guess my only concern about that is, is if we're looking at parity, is it cheaper to build the infrastructure and for dirty hydrogen? Is the capital cost going to be cheaper for dirty hydrogen as it is for clean hydrogen? Because that would be.
Yeah, it's cheaper today, for sure, to be doing, you know, hydrogen from fossil. But I think a combination of the incentives from the federal government, the funding from the federal government, the hydrogen hub activity, I think it's a function of, it does become increasingly uneconomic to do hydrogen the dirty way. And I think also markets are responding. So there's going to be, if you, no one's going to invest and help you build a dirty hydrogen plant. There just not, it doesn't make any sense.
Question, Barofsky, I'd also say that depending on the state, there are different levels of carbon cap and trade and other local legislation that could discourage that as well. But it's really more of a, you're looking at this from a positive, you know, let's make it economically as good or better to do clean hydrogen than dirty hydrogen. That's, that's the disincentive. But there could also be other costs if you had dirty hydrogen realized with clean hydrogen.
I guess the last part of that is, once you have a molecule, you can't tell where it came from. It's like the electron.
It's like an electron.
You don't know where, you know, was that a coal electron or was that a hydro electron? We don't know where the, once it's produced and put into the system, it's there. Just can't produce it.
That's correct.
Okay, so I've got a number of questions, starting kind of with inputs and going towards losses and then finishing up with externalities and applications. So if, I definitely won't have enough time, so I might need to do some follow-up. Just trying to help understand the technology. How much water does it take to make one megawatt?
So, so we don't, I don't have the number in megawatts, but if we talk about sort of the equivalency, when we talk about hydrogen, often in measuring it, we use a kilogram measurement, and one kilogram of hydrogen is roughly energy equivalent to a gallon of gasoline. So here you can see from this slide how the water consumption breaks down. The other thing to remember about electrolysis is you get some of that water back. And when you're running a fuel cell vehicle, for instance, the Toyota Mirai, that vehicle will produce about a cup of water that is completely clean for every, I think it's, every few miles you travel. And that water can be released in your driveway and it doesn't hurt anything. You know, it's perfectly fine. You could drive on your lawn and release the water and that would be okay. So relatively speaking to some of the other clean energy technologies we have, the water, obviously you have to be considerate about where you're producing hydrogen and via electrolysis, you know, take into account water constraints. But if you think about, we're going to be moving off of gasoline, then that if we use less water to produce gasoline, we have more water to produce hydrogen. And I've heard folks say that there is in any way we'd use more water to produce hydrogen than we are currently using to make gasoline.
I was just going to say, we did have that exact detail in the 2018 study, so we can get you that piece of information. The limiting factor was not water from EWEB's perspective. The consumption of water was pretty low.
Okay, great. So I saw that there was a cleaning system, so does it have to be pre-treated clean water to be able to use to go through the system? And if so, what kind of?
I was going to say, there's actually some advantages if the water is slightly dirty. In fact, in many cases, they can add salt or other things. It does not have to be ultra-pure water, the application.
And then, so once the, once you're treating it, then are there any uncertainties or other chemicals? What are the, what are the permanents that come out of this process?
I mean, in a, in the process, if you go back to the diagram, I mean, it really is just you're bringing hydrogen in and you're making water in a filter.
Filtered electrolysis, there's not a chemical, something that's used that comes out of it that's a.
I mean, in the process here and the inputs and the outputs, there's no problem. The biggest environmental concern, if you go back to some of these sustainability concerns here, is about rare earth metals that go into the membranes and the pieces of equipment. And they're looking at, as they scale up some of those pieces of equipment, what other opportunities are to reduce reliance on rare earth metals in the pieces of equipment. But the actual process has no negative emissions that would be harmful.
Okay, well, I'm at my three minutes. Okay, so let's say we're using renewable energy to do this process. So the amount of energy that goes in, how much energy, energy do we get out? Do you have anything in the diagrams to say, okay, we put in, yeah, the efficiency loss?
I have to look it up.
I do know that it, that it takes about 52 kilowatt hour, what is it, 52 kilowatts to make a kilogram of hydrogen? And a kilo, and I can only do it as far as energy uses when it comes to mobility applications. So 52 kilowatts into a kilogram of hydrogen, and a kilogram of hydrogen will move a vehicle about 127 miles.
Okay, that's some kind of scale there. So if we could do it maybe on a utility.
Yeah, right, sorry.
Yeah, I had to get out the calculator when I read the report, just to convert the units back and forth.
So you talked about storage being a problem, and I noticed on the diagram that it was negative 253 degrees Celsius. So what are the operating, I mean, obviously that seems like a challenge because you have to keep it cold. So what are the operating costs and inputs to keep it at that level of temperature?
Yeah, the inputs there are, and that is the challenge, right? So when you think about storage, you really want to understand what are you trying to store for and how long do you need to keep it stored, right? And so the reason that entities are looking at liquefaction and getting it down to that negative 253 degrees Celsius in order to liquefy is because when you liquefy, you can get more product in a smaller space. And so often, back to Commissioner Brown's question about transportation application, oftentimes, an organization may not choose to have onsite generation of their own hydrogen. They may choose to have drop, you know, hydrogen delivered to them. And in order to have that and not have a constant stream of deliveries all day long, you need to have a higher volume in each tube and delivered in tube trailer. And so that's where the liquefaction comes in. So you don't want to have it stored for that long, for months on end, because the cost and the energy losses can be significant. That's where those intermediate chemistries come in to help manage that long-term storage. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay. So on the, on the space side, again, if we could just get some sort of scale, like I noticed there was the 9, 9,000, is the biggest, like how much space does that take up? Just for sense of scale, if we could.
Are you talking about the one in Michelle? This?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our applications will drive a different type of storage. We're looking at a resiliency application where we need a week or two.
Yeah, like so how much space would we need to cover a week or two from a resiliency perspective? That would be great if we could.
Pump station or something like that. Those are the things that.
Yeah, and even from a resiliency standpoint, if you get deliveries, then you want to make sure you have enough onsite and in case a delivery was interrupted. So you, people want to size their storage facilities to meet the needs even in case of a service interruption. But it all depends on where the hydrogen is being produced and how it's being consumed. So oftentimes, the most efficient from a cost and from a carbon footprint standpoint is if you can produce the hydrogen very close to where it's being consumed, because then you don't have to worry about turning it into a liquid and transporting it in potentially a non-hydrogen vehicle, which might be having diesel emissions or other sorts of carbon in that lifecycle of the carbon intensity of that product. So the closer you can put the production to consumption is better. And, but that also looks at how much space do you have available? And there are certain setback requirements for some of this and citing requirements that are being developed and formalized with national regulatory bodies. And there's some of those considerations.
The chemicals that are combined with the hydrogen to make them the hydrides? What are some of those and what are many of the aspects do they have? Are those things that we would use at a utility level? Are those mostly for like the transportation purposes? Would we have a vote to that?
Yeah, the two most common intermediate chemistries that, you know, EWEB has looked at, the one that doesn't have carbon in it is ammonia. And so you can turn pure hydrogen into ammonia. The chemical formula is NH3, so it combines with nitrogen. And, you know, that's a, you store it at a liquid and it's at, you know, normal temperatures, so you don't have to keep it cold. So the benefit is that you can store it in that form. You know, it's easier to transport, you can move it around. Another one we have looked at is there's actually a local company that turns hydrogen into something called formic acid. And that chemical formula is, I have it here, CH2O2. So there is a carbon atom as part of that, and part of that ends up being how can you recycle that carbon atom to continually use in that storage process so that you're not releasing CO2 as part of that process?
So if you, if you turn it into ammonia, then how do you get it out of that? Do it again, you have to put more electricity in to split it again to turn it back into hydrogen? Thank you. Leaking issues. So if the hydrogen gets out, does it just, it just recombines with oxygen and it becomes water again, right? So it's not, it doesn't have the same kind of risks that you get with. And then would, it is never be, oh.
It is flammable. So there are, you know, back to Commissioner Brown's question about when you have to update your fleets, you do have to update your shop to have hydrogen leak detection systems so that lighting and things wouldn't cause a spark, just like you would if you had a compressed natural gas kind of facility or something like that. So there are similar detection systems in a shop-based facility if you had it in a transportation application.
That was right into my next question, that kind of the risks of explosion. Hydrogen, because it's a smaller molecule, gets out quickly. So it's, there is a higher level of risk that we would.
Michelle, isn't it less flammable than the traditional fossil fuels, though? So all of, I mean, you have to be careful, there is a risk of fire, but it is actually less explosive and flammable than our traditional gasoline diesel. So, and there are established safety mechanisms and processes that you would follow, just like you would with any sort of liquid fossil fuels.
That's correct. So one of the advantages of hydrogen, while it is flammable, because it's the lightest element, it escapes into the atmosphere at 44 miles an hour. So it goes up and it goes out, and it, it tends not to concentrate in the atmosphere, therefore, unlike gasoline or propane fumes or, you know, gasoline is a, or propane, they, they stick around on the ground and hydrogen sort of goes up and out. And the hydrogen flame actually is, is let, is lower in temperature than hydrocarbon flames, for what that's worth.
So it just leaves the atmosphere?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the atmosphere. It leaves your facility. It wants to go up and out into the atmosphere.
Okay. You're like splitting water and then causing.
It's hard for all of us to leave the atmosphere, right? We're, we're kind of here, but.
Unless you're Elon Musk.
Okay, those are my questions. Does anybody else have any? Okay, all right. Thank you all very much. Really appreciate the information.
You didn't know this was going to be a chemistry lesson.
Thank you very much, Michelle. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you so much. It was great to, it was great to be here. Have a good rest of the evening.
Then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, Upriver Meeting Follow-Up Discussion. So we had, we had this on the agenda in case there were thoughts and lessons learned from what we had, and we'll open it up if.
I mentioned this in email that I just felt like the staff team was really well-prepared and really handled, you know, a lot of challenging questions, gratefully. So appreciation to the staff and to you, Sonia, for facilitating that long meeting. It was a lot of work. You did a great job.
I had received a lot of emails ahead of time, and so I wasn't surprised by the questions that we got. But I don't know how we combat misinformation. I know that, I really believe that EWEB and staff did a fantastic job leading up to our decision on Levert with all of our outreach that we did up there. And some people came, but not a ton of people came. Some of the people that were at that meeting had attended multiple listening sessions and had opportunities to speak directly with staff and had their questions answered. So I don't, I don't know that anybody left that meeting feeling good. I feel like folks up there, maybe they just hadn't been convinced. I feel like there was a misconception that we were still making the decision. So I feel like we've been very clear about that, so I'm not sure where that information came from or just how people think different things. I really don't know what we could have done differently. And I agree, Sonia, you did a fantastic job leading that meeting. That was not easy. And I really appreciate that you were very calm and that you gave people a chance to speak. Yeah, but I don't know how, how we could have handled that meeting and had people be feeling good about it.
So I too think you did a great job. I've been in that seat before, and you notice there was probably my name was mentioned a few times. I think I was trying to get, let into conversation, because I would have asked a question. I wish somebody would have asked a question about this mythical road that was going to wipe out all the people's properties and everything, the road that we designed and everything else, because I could have easily said, I have no idea what you're talking about. Because, you know, I, unless I missed a meeting or something, there's no road designed and everything else. But there was a lot of conversation about that from the residents, about, about the road, the ride away, we're going to destroy the Japanese gardens and we're going to be three feet from the house and all these other things. What are we talking about? Because they, a lot of people spoke about that. And I don't know why we didn't ask to see, you know, where did this come from or anything that would have, would have kind of alleviated it. I wasn't going to say a word because I know the minute I open my mouth, it's just going to be like a shot of blood.
That is fine. I know it's your turn, but just about the road, that is what I got the majority of emails about, and I got a lot of emails about that, and I answered every single email. And so some of the people that spoke and talked about the road, the people that I had responded directly to, so I, I don't know what. so I, and, yeah, I don't know what what could have been done otherwise.
Frank, you have a comment on the road in the moment?
Oh, I just have some general comments I can.
No, it's just, I just, you know, I I came along with the impression that they had this idea that we're going to put it in too late, we're going to wipe out the right-of-way and we're going to do all this destruction to their properties so we could use good pasture as the alternative. And I have not read about that road or seen that road or discussed that road. And so if I miss something, that's okay, but I don't know where they got that concept or that perception that we're going to do that right-of-way taking and, you know, all these other things. So and I don't know why we didn't ask for it, or maybe it was just letting sleeping dogs lie.
You have comments on, or others?
Yeah, well, I have a lot of comments, just in in general. But specific to the road, we have talked about developing the south entrance or a south side path. And we've talked about potentially the bridge and going down, going out the other direction. My primary comments have to do with being very specific about our scope and our role in this process going forward. EWEB is not the transportation authority, we're not the Parks and Recreation Agency. And I'll talk a little bit more about the dam removal piece. But regarding the road, I can see where some people would interpret things. But this is a long process. And I'll I'll comment a little bit more about our role in that process after after people are done.
Yes, I mean, for me, it was it was Jekyll and Hyde. Hey, because I, for the past two years, I've been the representative for the Mackenzie watershed council. And I go to those meetings and all we get is is praise and and a voice for all of the stuff that we do up river. And so that's, that's the feel that I came in going, you know, to that meeting with, was look at all the good work we've done up here. And then to just get shouted at was uncomfortable. I'll put it right out there, I, you know, there was a guy standing up screaming in my face. And it's just, it wasn't comfortable. I don't know how to alleviate that. I think one of the things that I think we need to concentrate on going forward, we know that the transportation issue is is a big thing up there. So bringing in the partners and talking to them and letting them know the the people that they need to scream at is not this bored when it comes to transportation issues. This, that, it's Heather Buck and it's Steve Mokrheisky and it's the Oregon Department of Transportation. But it was eye-opening, because there were a lot of people in that room that I see as as friendly faces. And and then there were other ones up there that just was, it was not comfortable. And I don't know how to alleviate that, but I'm open to any suggestions. And John, you know, you you've dealt with it before with the boat ramp. You know, you you laid the groundwork, said, I know these people up there and and get ready for it. But I I can't get ready for that. So that's just what I am.
I've said it before and I'll say it again. You can, with such outreach, before a decision is made, is human. At the table, they will not pay attention and they will not give feedback until the decision is made. Is, in nature, people are very busy. You know, I mean, and I think we did the right thing. We had 20-plus meetings to try to solicit information. And during that process, we changed our minds, because that's what you do during that process. And I think, you know, they're like, oh, well, these, all these meetings were just showy meetings. Well, that's clearly not the case, because even during the conversation that we had with people, they said, well, you, well, this came out and then got to find information, and then you said this. It's like, yeah, we learned from that process. And I know it's uncomfortable and that's, it's unfortunate, but it's also part of what we have to do as elected officials, because we're not going to please everybody and especially that group up there. I mean, we, as we noted before, like, we were handed every decision. There were no good decisions that were going to appease the majority of the people. And I really appreciate that staff and all of us got to a place where we had a unanimous vote. And we got to say, look, you know, we looked through all this information and none of us did grandstanding, well, I'm going to be the person, I'm your savior. Stood together and isn't it hard, though? Yeah, but we did what we needed to do. And as much as, you know, as much as the the meeting itself was challenging, I just think that that we did the right thing getting to there and we're going to have to continue to have these, you know, kinds of conversations. I think the one thing that I would say that we could potentially improve on when we have these kinds of meetings, you know, we get really wonky here in the language that is used here, triple bottom line. That sounds so business-y, people are like, oh, you're a business. And they inherently feel that as a business, your whole deal is about making profit. It's like, but we're we're not, we don't make profit, that's not what we do. But they still don't, like, they don't get that, they don't know that, they just see us as this entity that. So to the extent that we can, when we have these sorts of public meetings, like, take it down to the absolute bare bones and remove as much of that business lingo as humanly possible, that is the way, because I've I've gone through a ton of these town hall meetings when I worked for Representative Barnhart. And he was the chair of the Tax Policy Committee, nobody loves taxes. But the way that we got to connect with people was just talking about it in the most human terms possible and relating to people. And so to the extent possible, we're going to have more meetings up there. This is going to be a long process. Next year, people are still going to be unhappy and they're still going to be calling at us. So to the extent that next year we can try to use some more of that kind of down-to-earth language and lay out what we've got, you know, the decisions we've made, like we did, that's probably our best.
Just one other comment is, I can understand that it's difficult for people who live right on that lake. I mean, we are directly affecting that, I totally, I understand that. And I don't, I don't need to minimize that at all. But I also know that part of this process will be to landscape, like, once the dam comes down, to landscape it into more of a natural area. And so that, I believe, it will be beautiful. And I think it's really important for us to emphasize that, because I did get an email just talking about what's going to happen afterwards and it's just going to be a mud flap. So I think just letting people know that we're not just taking down the dam and walking away, or we're not taking down the dam and widening roads and walking away. Like, our our whole intent is to restore it to a more natural state and that it will be something that's that's really beautiful.
I would hope the staff would reach out, look at the examples of river dams thrown out on the road in the last few years and look at what they're just watching. What happened before and after, lessons learned. And that's right in our backyard, and they're doing the climate river dams. They're doing four of them on the climate right now that have homes on them, too. And so hopefully, we can learn from, you know, what they've done, the examples of how they how they redid property lines and landscaped it and sentiment, you know, because there's a lot of sentiment there and all that stuff, everything that that happened before and after. So we can learn from that and and go from there. Because we, you know, not every day you can say you got an example of taking a lake to a river and you've got homes, but we do, so I hope we could capitalize on that.
Yeah, I was, you know, first of all, just going to commend staff, you know, for their professional, sorry, for their professional and respectful and empathetic approach. When I thought, sorry, just a second, I'm getting choked up.
Yeah.
No, I was, I was really impressed with how they handled the information and the situation. And I also wanted to commend commissioners for your willingness to engage in the community on on a particularly impactful decision. And so, and I wanted to commend you for that. I do think that there's a few things that we need to to make sure that we're clear on. I think there's a, there's a lot of details that are going to come out of the action plan, such as there will be a design review on on how the the area is repaired, for example. But a couple of opportunities just just to adjust. I I think we have to own a little bit more of the decision about around the dam removal specifically. We decided not to generate any more at Lieberg. I don't think it's fair to put all of the the blame of that on FERC to say, oh, FERC is going to make us take the dam out. In fact, it's more about the FERC process that will lead to that outcome than FERC themselves. FERC is going to have the, you know, a settlement process similar to a relicensing process. And there are a number of of agencies and entities and stakeholders who will demand that the dam comes out once it's has been removed. And so I think we have a tendency to say that, oh, FERC is going to make us remove this. Well, FERC is part of the process and it's more about the FERC process and other stakeholders that will drive into that. I also think the part that we need to own there is it's in our best interest not to own, operate, maintain and deal with the risk of an asset that has no reason to, it has no fulfillment of our mission. At some point, you do, you haven't, you have to maintain your assets that that help you fulfill your mission. And and a a bridge or a dam without generation does not do that. And so I think it's, it's not just a FERC and a FERC process. I think we look at it, and I wouldn't recommend that we own, operate and maintain assets that don't help us fulfill our mission as a utility. I I just, I don't think that's in the long-term best interest of of the organization or our customers. I felt like a lot of the public testimony either was sort of self-serving and risk-guided, and a lot of it was very inaccurate. But we really didn't engage in in the inaccuracies there. And I think that was, that was part of being respectful listeners. We had made a decision, we've set a direction, there's more details to come. I think there's a recognition that it that it is impactful. But I think, I think we also need to be very clear about where our roles begin and end. And like I said earlier, we will work very closely with Lane County. We work very closely with the Oregon Department of Transportation. I have called Steve Mokrheisky, he is aware of the issue. He knows he has some transportation issues to solve. And by the way, he has a 10- or 15-year advance notice, as do the customers in that area, I think that's important. The one thing I wrote, I will actually specifically defend staff on were the comments about asbestos. The particular individual who made that comment, we have responded to her multiple times via email, copied commissioners. There is a very low likelihood that the cement has asbestos in it. It was mixed on-site, it was not mixed at the Portland Cement Company where asbestos was known to have been used. It is a very, very low likelihood that that's the case. Is it 100%? No, but that's why we go through any sort of materials testing when you're demolishing a large structure like that. But to portray this as, oh, staff being inadequate or not thinking about this, or I I thought that was, that was really done, you know, with with ulterior motives and quite honestly, poor taste. So I wanted to, that was, that was one example of just some inaccurate comments that we chose not to engage on. And and there were probably another 40 like that that we just chose not to engage in that forum. I think staff has done an excellent job communicating factually when we needed to. And we'll continue to work with the community going forward on the details, the many, many details for over a decade that's that this process is going to take. And we'll continue to be good listeners. But I, you can tell I'm a little riled up on a couple of things. But I also think we need to have some discussions. And I'll, I'll have discussions when I have individual check-ins with commissioners around how we would like to have the meeting format with the upriver community, how we might want to make some adjustments to that format going forward to avoid a bit of the grandstanding type of approach that we saw. Thanks for letting me.
Yeah, just one thought response about the the dam itself. I agree with you completely, like, I think it's reasonable for us to own the decision we're making and the implication for that dam. I guess my thought is, I've heard so many people say, well, can't you just leave the dam, take out the roll gates and use it as a bridge? And I hear what you're saying, well, why would we want to own that asset? And someone might say, well, why don't you transfer that to Lane County and then they can own that asset? And I think the answer is, I don't think FERC is going to let us do that, right?
We we have actually approached that subject with Lane County. And I'll have to actually talk to staff about their specific response. But I don't believe Lane, Lane County wants to solve the transportation issue with that as an option. That's the impression I got.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't matter if someone else wants to buy it, as long as we we don't miss the long-term obligation. And that that would be an acceptable answer. And I think that's going to have to come out in the action plan. I agree with that.
And then only one other thought, which is, that room is tight, wind full. And it kind of magnifies the energy, especially when it's antagonistic. And it feels like if we could find a bigger space, a little bit more open venue, it might not feel quite so strained.
I don't know the size of the new community center. But we helped them.
We've, we've met in the bays, they've moved the trucks out before, and we've met in the bays. The only problem there is the acoustics. It was, it's hard to hear and listen, but maybe that owns anything. But, you know, that is an option.
John Brown, did you have anything else to? I had just a couple of last quick things. I did want to, you know, I thought one of the kind of humanizing of all the comments is when I called you out, you did such a great job saying, hey, I listened to it and I changed my mind. I thought that that really showed that, hey, we thought this process and you listened, you thought about it, and you were presented with a whole bunch of other facts, you can go to a different conclusion. And I think other, I could see other people in the crowd as they looked out there like. You know, that, that's the kind of thing that, that you hope that we can, to some extent, engage a little bit more in the inaccuracies in a calm, that, that's the challenge, right? Doing it in a calm way that doesn't invoke other emotions, but you did a great job. And then I was curious, you know, we're talking about making it real on the cost side. People don't, oh, like, oh, well, what's $400 million? Like, they have no sense of what that actually costs them individually. If we can really boil that more down and say, hey, if we had voted on this, we're great, on an average basis, would have been this much. Was, just, I think that helps individual people who are not in the midst of this all the time get better. And last quick thought was, could we actually do a follow-up with, like, some of the questions that were asked that were just blatantly inaccurate, that we didn't combat at the time, we didn't, you know, not combat, but we didn't, you know, answer at the time? Could we maybe come up with something and put an article in the Mackenzie River Reflections or on the website and maybe, you know, send it out to the, some of the community members? I don't think people signed in, but to give that outreach out there.
Can you change those rules, too?
The what?
Remember they just said, just change the rules? Do that.
Yeah, I, I think on that communications question that President Carlson, I'd like to consult with communications staff a little bit. I I think sometimes you can come across as defensive, depending on how how your responses get structured in the format. And I'm not sure whether the audience, at least the audience in the room, really wanted to hear the correct responses. Most of them actually are issues that we've published and responded to already. But I, I think it's a good suggestion, we'll look into it.
But like, if people think that we're, you know, in charge of the road and we're making this and that's inaccurate, I mean, it's just.
And again, I answered so many questions about that. And some of the people that got up and said, nice, yes, they were the same people. Same thing with the asbestos, I also directly answered about the asbestos, so I just, I.
I'm just concerned if we don't say anything about it, that those people who are being very vocal. very vocal are continuing to spread this inaccurate thing.
And I do think some of that is in our FAQ, right? Some of that was updated because of that.
Okay.
So.
I just want to say thank you for fielding so many questions from residents at River County, I know a bunch, you know, I didn't receive any and I appreciate you taking that off. Yeah, that's a lot of work. And also, in my experience, it can, when there's misinformation like that, it can be just nearly impossible to get the right information, or you feel like it needs to be. So I think there's just very diminishing returns and I feel like actually our team has worked really hard to put good information out there and done, I think, what we expect.
Just see that. Okay. Shall we move on? All right. Drafts, Resiliency Board Policy.
President Carlson, I know, just, just as a quick agenda question for you. I know that we have this item teed up. We also have the next item, which is the Capital Plan Improvements, Assumptions and Priorities. I know Commissioner Brown has to leave, and I didn't know if there was a particular interest on your part or of either of these subjects, if there was a preferred subject. I just wanted to offer that up, that we could be flexible either way.
I appreciate that accommodation, but I only had one question and that was just the assumption between 3% and 5% for two years of inflation. That's my only comment. I think it's, I wouldn't do that, I'd give more like 5% for a longer period of time. I'm done with that agenda item.
Okay, well, all right, we can move on.
See if the presentation will, you know me.
Work our way through that one. Okay, so it sounds like this is, this is good to go.
All right.
So, President Carlson, commissioners, good evening. I have just a few things to cover. I know that in your packet, coming into the meeting, you have a draft policy that the board actually had initiated as part of our policy review last December. This is the same as what was also communicated last month in correspondence. The intent is to have a discussion this evening, have the board have a discussion. And depending on the degree of potential modifications, we could be prepared to bring that back for adoption with those edits next month. The way that the policy is structured, kind of similar to some of the other policies that we've started to use as a format, especially policies that relate to procedures or directives, not so much outcomes, but these are policies that really try to drive process and thinking through the organization based on expectations, are really oriented toward answering the question of why, in this case. We do recognize the importance of resiliency, given our role and essential services in our community. We go through and talk a little bit about what that means, how it's defined. And then we get into what the policy is actually directing the utility to do. And that's, in this case, to include resiliency considerations in how we design, operate infrastructure and systems, how we approach opportunities and issues with our workforce and the interactions that we have with our community. And then a little bit about how we plan to implement those directives through plans, risk assessments, triple bottom line analysis, how we incorporate that into the processes that we currently have or are currently supported by existing board policy. And so one example of that I'll give and then open up, really turn it back to you, President Carlson, is when we think about infrastructure and systems, an important aspect of resiliency is to looking, to make sure that those operate and can be maintained under normal conditions, but to also consider how those would be operated, particularly if you are in a recovery mode or if you're in a response mode. And so that's, that's called out specifically as an example in the infrastructure and systems that we will take those considerations when we're doing designs or plans, not just sort of the normal, but also the abnormal conditions. And so that's an example of a directive. And I won't go through the rest of the directives, I think that those were as part of the background. But would be happy to, we turn it back to you, President Carlson, for really the board to deliberate, this is a board policy, so this is your policy, as presented for consideration by management. So I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I just have, I have just a couple of questions. So it's almost like we're adding another, like a quadruple, right? Like, we're going to put resiliency in there sometimes when making decisions. But how do we know that we're, that we're including resiliency in decision-making? Like, how will that be obvious?
Well, I think it depends on the scale of the project. So I'll just take, for example, infrastructure, for example. Both the water and the electric utility do master planning. The water utility is, as a very formal process, it's actually driven by a state requirement. Part of the specification or the scope of master planning should have content in there relative to resiliency. And in fact, it probably has historically. When we have major projects, I think it's a, it's a valid question to make sure that we have those in the design and the scope. Those would be called out as type 2, so type 2 projects will probably be fairly obvious when we get into the design and scope of the project. I think in other ways, and many of those would appear throughout our quarterly reporting, for example, the same if we have a specific annual, annual objective. But many of the results actually are driven by the overall performance of the organization as you, as you get into these circumstances and the designs and the workforce planning, for example.
I guess my question is, is there, does there need to be anything specific that kind of codifies or mandates that, you're, you're kind of, you're writing this policy one day.
Sure.
How do we make sure, like, I guess, is this specific enough? Do you think that other people won't follow this?
Well, I do. Rod was going to jump in, but I'll follow up on that question as well.
Kind of related, but, so we're defining resiliency, basically it's risk-based preparation, management, and then recovery. So each one of those breakdowns has certain programs and there's, you know, there's a science around risk-based, and so that's one of the things that we're working on in one of our business continuity group. And so I think there'd be tangible ways outside of TBL or outside of a project, because really this could apply to programs as well as, as projects. So, but you ask a good question, right? So how do you push the policy down and, and so it takes time for it to take roots and grow, but, you know, it starts here, so. And I think by calling out those KPIs and majoring it and asking people to start to think about it, be a big piece of that.
Culturally institutionalized.
I think it would, it's typical for a guidance policy to focus on the what. You know, what you're doing is you're directing the general manager to take these things into consideration in the process. Now, there will be very specific outcomes if there's an area, for example, that we are not addressing, or we have an annual goal, or it'll come, right now, it's an important part of our strategy, but it might not be as an important part strategically 10 years from now. But you'll see it in annual objectives and you'll see it in quarterly reporting and those, those types of things. But this being a, a policy really around guidance is naturally going to say, here's what we want you to do as the general manager, here's, here's why. And then there is some in there around the implementation, especially when we do triple bottom line analysis. It should have a component in there that deals with normal and abnormal conditions, which would, which would occur as part of resiliency.
Thank you.
By the way, it's in the general manager's job description to know the board policy. Just so, just so you know. I'm just saying, just in the future.
Sure, yeah. I'm grateful to see the workforce piece included. I think that's super important and I think it's really added, so thank you. And I think the direction is fine, like, I don't have any objections with the language and the way it's put together, but the language, it's supportive, but it's vaguenough. And I guess that kind of has some of the same questions that Minnie's asking about, like, how do we feel we're actually doing this? And so I think the measurement and how we measure progress here will be really important. I'm really interested, Rod, how, how you might propose to measure this. And from my perspective, I'd like to see those metrics either included with this, in this, or come up alongside, you know, as we're thinking about adopting this policy, also have the metrics with it so we can see what it is that we're going to be measuring over time. To me, that'd be really helpful to make this more concrete. It's clear to me that as an organization, EWEB is already, as we said, prioritizing resilience in a number of ways. Our reliability standards drive investments in resilient infrastructure. We're working on the wildfire mitigation plan, we're working on business continuity planning, a whole host of things that we do regularly. But as you, as you just mentioned, Frank, there's, this is kind of, gives us a potential if there are places where we think things are missing in the future. And I actually feel like there are a couple of items that are more specific, that as yet I haven't seen clear board direction on, that I think could actually, I think should be incorporated in here. And from my perspective, just two. One is around local generation, right? We just, we aren't generating with Leberg anymore. We have some questions coming up in the future about whether or not to renew contracts for local generation that we have access to in event of some larger grid failure. And so I think actually this would be an appropriate place for the board to provide some direction about, you know, what percentage of power do we either want control over or, you know, do we have, yeah, it's locally dispatchable or maybe it's storage? I don't know, but we've talked about this some, that kind of local value has such a resilience connection that I think it would be an appropriate thing to bake into here. And the other is around our buildings. You know, we've talked about construction of EWEB facilities and the importance of them not only functioning normally, but when there's a seismic event, we really need these buildings to serve us. And most buildings built to the standard building code are built for life safety, which means you can get out without the building falling on your head, which is fantastic. But we need buildings that remain standing and at least usable, even if the power and water don't work. We need the building to remain standing and be usable and repairable. So buildings built to life safety standard often have to be demolished because they're so structurally compromised that they can't be repaired. And so from my perspective, it'd be really valuable for us, again, I think it fits in here to bake in some board direction about what's our expectation of any new buildings that were. I would put those two items as something that I, I think we should consider putting in here and that's really at the end of my comments. Thanks.
John Brown? Okay, sorry, Frank, and then we'll go to John Brown.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I actually believe they are in here. When I think about the design of a building, what this particular, what this policy draft says is that that building's uses, both during normal times and abnormal times, needs to be considered in the design. I don't think every building should be designed to a certain seismic standard. I think it depends on the use of the building. There will be times when different standards need to be employed. I think the same around resource choices and the contracts that you mentioned. This policy, to me, would drive the consideration of what happens when the grid's operating normally and what happens when the grid is not operating normally. And so I interpret this not necessarily as vague, but that you will consider these in the major decisions, whether that's a contract, a building design, whatever. I interpret that as in there without being a specific metric. This type of policy governs a whole series of actions and designs. It's not, you don't measure resiliency with one output. So this is to guide the series of decisions that relate to resiliency, not just, oh, resiliency, we're a 6.0 factor on the resilience, because I don't even know that there is a resiliency scale. But to your examples, I view that as in there. Now, the board may want it to be more specific, and this is, like I said, this is a board policy, but I view it as in there as it's driving the process to consider what you just.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate that this is comprehensive in providing direction of things. And I think that we may have the same understanding about local generation and building design standards, but I'm not sure that the next person, to Minnie's point, like, I'm not sure the next person in your chair, and to me, to the extent that we're very specific about a couple of those things, it might be easier for us to make sure that we have the same understanding. And then as far as seismic standards of buildings, I agree with you, not every building needs to be to a high seismic standard. There are some maybe outbuildings that are just covering some tools we don't care about, that I'm not really invested in those. I think I will be talking about buildings that are occupied by people or essential equipment. And then I would say, like, the default should be, we'll build it to a higher seismic standard, unless there's a pressing reason not to. So that, I don't want to be dogmatic about it, I just feel like the default should be that. And, and my understanding is that with this building, there was some seismic performance that was backed out as we got closer to building because we couldn't afford it, which I understand, like, I totally understand the financial situation we were in. And also, I think, I think it's good for us to be baking that into the cake whenever and wherever we can.
John Brown?
So first to your generation, I don't want to get a metric in there that says that we have to have a certain percentage of local generation. It takes away our negotiating power. So if we come down and we've got IP and Seneca and their local generation, they know we have to have a certain percentage of our portfolio local. And everybody knows where our power comes from, it's public. And then we're negotiating and we've got a contract that we don't want to sign, but we have a policy that says we have to have a certain percentage, there goes our negotiating power. So I don't, I don't want to mandate that we do that. I mean, I think it's in the policy that we rely on that as much as we can, but we have to look at cost, too. I mean, what, what, Seneca, I mean, I've never seen the contract, but I was involved in it. And then with the buildings, I mean, I was a committee that built this thing. And the first, we told the voters we wouldn't go over $70 million, $110 million when we started, that we had to do a lot of earth, that we had to get rid of the green roofs, we had to get rid of a whole lot of building component items. But essential service buildings cost about almost 40% more than a regular building, a standard seismic three. And essential service for hospitals, police stations and fire stations, and that's about it. Schools aren't even essential service. And, but they don't need to run, but stop, think about the concept. They have to survive it. A lot of our buildings are, basically, our water treatment and our water testing and things such as that. So I'm comfortable with the way this is written and not getting too specific, because if it spocks you in and takes away your ability to have latitude and discretion, then I think we just have to make the assumption that the leadership and the board are going to continue to be as responsible as they have been in the past.
You know, I think this is a high-level policy. I hear resiliency, right? I'm thinking, okay, who gets, who gets water first? Who gets power first? That, that's the citizen in me, right? Is, is the hospital going to get, what's the list, you know, that you go down to restoring, right? And I'm sure there's a list there somewhere, or I hope there's a list there somewhere. Because if there is the earthquake, people are going to say, where do I get my water? And how long until I get my power? You know, kind of to Matt's point, we can be 100% resilient. It's, it's the cost, right? You know, it's, and that's, that's going to be, you know, you were talking about the metrics and how do we measure the metrics? Your other question is, when you're going through this, how do you balance cost against resilience? And where that, you know, where does that lie? We can have all of our pipes lined with, I mean, redundant pipes and. We can have all of our pipes lined with, I mean, redundant pipes and NASA grade, you know. If you're going to the moon, you've got three backups or four backups. How many backups are we comfortable with, right? And at what point can we afford or not afford those? I think we see it materializing in our second source water. You know, it's like we've realized that this is an area that we're weak in as far as resiliency. We're stepping up and gonna invest a chunk of change to make sure that we're there. So I like the policy. I like the lens that it goes through. The question I have about the lens is, what prescription are you using, right? How do you know which? Look at it, I guess. Cost. I figured it into that triple bottom line because it's now, instead of a three-legged stool, it's a four, it's a chair. And you can sit on a stool with three legs. It's more safe. Chair costs more than a stool.
I actually appreciate the conversation because I appreciate, Matt, you know, your application of it, right? And I appreciate really several comments around, you know, it's a a quadra bottom line now, or a four-legged chair, which can rock, by the way, because none of you don't have three legs. But I guess I would really look at the intent of this policy as to daylight and intentionalize those decisions. If we were indeed making a trade-off, that it would be done through a lens that would make it intentional. It wouldn't, it wouldn't just be a decision based on triple bottom line as it exists today. There would be true consideration for what is the application under a different scenario after an earthquake? What is the cost and the risk associated with local generation in a resiliency type of situation? I think it daylights a lot of the things that we talk about. But by policy now, it takes that forward to whoever's in these chairs, I'm gonna say my chair, your chairs, too. Whoever's in these chairs to make those decisions intentionally. I don't know the exact prescription. It depends on whether the organization has diabetes or COVID at the time. You're going to actually have to apply it under the conditions and the priorities. We have, in fact, the next subject, we'll talk about some of the guidelines we use for capital. If doing something more resiliently pushes up against the boundaries that the board has set around our capital and our rate increase targets, there is an intentional conflict, intentional tension that has to be resolved. So I'm not sure what the prescription is, but I know a policy like this will highlight it.
Okay, well, last couple. I mean, I like the policy. I tried to think about how the policy was, I mean, you have your utility, you have lethality in water. You inherently have built-in rules, regulations, requirements already that forced us to think about how do we keep the lights on? Because we have to operate 24 hours a day. And that, I mean, that in and of itself lends to it. So I kept trying to think about, okay, how does the resiliency policy add in that additional layer? And when I tried to think of the different items, I mean, the community aspect, the staff aspect. To me, it's, that reinforces it, but then it's really about the culture that is built around it. So this covered everything I thought would be in there, or what, you know, any example I could think of. I kept going in and finding it, but then it is going to be that the KPIs, what is it, how do we end up building that into the culture from the staff, the GM, the board level? You know, and our rules and expectations and thought process and design. So I love what is written there. Then it's the first step in how do we just institutionalize it? Thank you for even to offer. Just to be clear, like, I wasn't looking for specific for any of these, but I think, like, to Sonia's point, how do we just make sure that it's more present? Kind of do that, but even if we're including, like, little how
I think it gives, it gives the board that tool as well. And when we start having discussions around future resources and the iterations of the integrated resource plan, how is resiliency considered in some of these decisions going forward? I think that's the intent is to pull those out and create that culture. I'm not against metrics. I think we have, there are certain policies we have where there are components of it that have very specific outcomes that we're looking for. And I think that's really appropriate in those cases. I struggle with how you would actually develop metrics for resiliency. I know there's some great examples, but to me, a board-level policy just highlights the process that addresses those as we go through those processes. As those come across, those issues become real for us, we need a tool. So you now can have a tool. Well, how, what, resiliency, what, how did you consider resiliency in this project? You know, okay, I think that's a fair question. And one that we're gonna have to incorporate into and institutionalize, I think, to what I was saying earlier.
Some of the metrics we already have in our KPIs, the financial targets, the delivery targets. How downwardly? Those are the measurements of resiliency to some extent. All right.
And just as a follow-up, I, you know, if there's specific things that you see in here or phrases or words or other things that we are uncomfortable with or have ideas around or have further thoughts, we can go through those at our check-in. And then further than that, unless there's something else, we can, we can either have another discussion, I'll leave that up to the board, either have another discussion, or we can push ahead and then do like we always do, do a six-months review, which will actually be the end of the year. We can incorporate any new procedure or policy into the year-end review to see if it's doing what we think it should be doing.
Get a quick head nod. Are we comfortable bringing this back for action next time?
I don't know if I can, without some more metrics or something to tell us how, whether we're doing it, it's hard for me to get behind it. It feels like, it says all the right things, but it's not, it's not specific enough. So, but it's just for me, but that doesn't mean that we don't bring it back for.
Let's bring it back for discussion next time, and if there are things that you think of in the meantime that can dial it in, then we can have that conversation next time.
Sure.
You have any direction?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, then we have a break. And so we'll take a break, 10 minutes. We will come back at 8:00. And then we'll do the rest of the.
Sure, let's get better, please.
Camera back on. Okay, and we are back. So we have the annual capital improvement plan assumptions and priorities. Turn it over to Frank and Rod.
Thank you, President Carlson. Commissioners with me is Rod Price, Assistant General Manager. We're here to sort of unofficially or officially kick off the financial planning season. Part of our annual process that we begin about this time of year. And then we, we work through really much of the rest of the year dealing and scheduling our capital and looking at trade offs. The agenda for this evening is to just give you a little bit of context and reminder around where we are in the process and the opportunities for commissioners to provide input and weigh in on different, different pieces of it. We'll talk about really two areas of some of the assumptions that we're, we're going into this planning process with. Some of those around business and economics and others around sort of how our strategy and operational forecasts and priorities are weighing into that. And then at the end, try to garner some board concurrence or guidance out of the assumptions that, that we are, are making in this process. Little bit of just context around the planning. We, we do go into this having driven a lot of the, the priorities based on a strategic work that, that the board and management has done. There's also a number of things that contribute to capital plans, but really we're, we're looking at the combination. This evening really of guidance around economic assumptions and investment priorities as we see it. And those will feed into the process that we go through for the long-term financial plan and the capital improvement plans. And then those eventually lead to our annual budgets and through the cost of service analysis to the actual impacts on our rates. And then this, this process then feeds back through our annual goals and through our quarterly reporting. And then we, we ended up, we end up doing it again next year. Again, this is where we are. We're talking about some assumptions. We'll be back again in July with more details around some of the preliminary results relative to capital and long-term financial plan projections based on some of the principles and, and guidance that you provide this evening as well as, as just the modeling that we do around the impacts and trade offs between capital O and M and long-term financial plan assumptions. And that'll provide some guidance then to drive our revenue requirement that ultimately drives this next year's budget. I will classify and just make sure that we, we understand that a long-term financial plan is really, provides EWEB with a, a long-term view of the financial impacts that really inform the near-term decisions. And so the board doesn't actually approve the long-term financial plan. It's really a, a tool. What actually eventually gets approved is the annual budgets, the O and M expense budget, and then the two capital budgets for electric and, and water. It is an iterative process. This part is a little bit behind the scenes. Very integrated process between how we're looking at our capital needs over the next 10 years or, or more and how those influence the long-term financial plan, which at, at some point eventually forecasts annual rate adjustments or revenue requirement adjustments for our, our customers. And this is over the next month or two in particular, staff looks at a lot of trade offs between capital, different financial assumptions and how those interact eventually having an impact on our customers. So this is a little bit of a, of a look underneath the hood when it comes to engineering and finance staff as well as, as other staff, IT investments, as well as investments and other things such as our resources and how those all, all play together. This is really the, the next two slides are the meat of the assumptions. I know there's a lot of words on here. Commissioners did receive this, this presentation as well as the background or ahead of time. Just a few, the policy assumptions really communicate that we do have financial metrics that we have established. We also have processes that we've established that we adhere to in, in this, this process. General economic assumptions, a few things to highlight there. We have some near-term pressures on some of the escalation factors that we have, we have included. I know that Commissioner, one of Commissioners Brown's questions had to do with capital escalation and the fact that he felt the 5% for a year or two needed to be extended. There are some impacts to that. I'll just try and answer that one, that one upfront. I think when you look at this escalator, if you, first of all, the, the Fed, it, it's part of their job is to manage inflation and the pressures. They have historically been pretty good at that. We have seen some excursions, but historical inflation and escalations have typically been anywhere from 2.5% to 3.5%, depending on the particular index that, that you may be looking at. If we underestimate escalation, then we have the, the outcome of that is we're reviewing projects and potentially looking at year-by-year adjustments, potentially even within year adjustments through budget amendments. If we underestimate the escalation, what we end up doing is over-collecting from our customers. And so you kind of have to look at sort of the, the over and the under and which one gives us the most flexibility. It seems like a sweet spot, at least from our finance staff, that we are recognizing there's some near-term upward pressures, but recognizing that over the long term, that'll be balanced through other fiscal policy. And if we do sort of over-bake that into the, into the cake, then we create some other issues for our customers. And, and so we, we think that this is actually probably a good landing spot. The, the target age of system, this impacts, how much we look at replenishing and replacing assets. You'll note in the memo that typically we look at sort of routine replacement at roughly 2.5x the annual depreciation. Part of that factor comes from the fact that you're depreciating assets that were put in place a number of years ago. And, and through escalation, what we found was the replacement costs tended to be 2, 2 to 2.5x higher than the original cost of the assets that we're replacing. That's where that, that 2.5x annual depreciation to maintain your age of system was based in. Couple of electric and water specific assumptions. Some of those are conservative assumptions we built in, we build in. For example, around consumption, we do build in a little bit of conservatism, knowing that weather impacts significantly water and electric consumption based on our customers. So for example, in a long, dry summer, we might have more than, more than that. But we also want to be conservative when we, when we talk about the revenue side. A couple, probably the, a couple of really key points here has to do with the fact that we have or, or plan to include in our assumptions the pre-funding for Lieberg beginning in 2024. And that will push up some of our previous assumptions around trying to keep rates within a, within a certain factor. And I'll get to that here in a second. But Lieberg generation being completely removed from the financial plan from a generation perspective and also incorporating the pre-funding in 2024 are two assumptions that, that we've made. But we would certainly like concurrence from the board that, that that's a good starting point anyway. We have included some electrification growth that is starting to have some favorable revenue impact in the outer years of the long-term financial plan period. The sort of the strategic and operational, these, these again kind of relate back. There's a little bit of, of history here. A lot of, and I guess one of the points is when we start to look at what we agreed to was for the reasonable rate escalation for our customers, it does compound. So when we, we think about something that's within a reasonable range of inflation, for example, a 3% annual rate increase ends up being in the 34% to 35% over 10 years. Just to, to give you a little bit of feel for that type of benchmark. I will say that based on some of the economics we're seeing now and the incorporation of some, of some early assumptions, we're starting to push, push past that 33% to 35% original benchmark. And there, there'll be some explanations for that, but we are starting to see some upward pressure. We do look at customer, not, not a level change right now in customer care here, but there is a note there that the methodology is being refined. We are looking at how we determine what the EWEB customer care level should be. What we're doing there is looking at the percentage of the population in Eugene that can be financially burdened. How much should EWEB contribute to returning that energy or utility burden back to something that would be more median? And so there's a little bit of calculations and work going on behind the scenes. And there'll be more information coming out as we start to get into the specifics of the budgeting. But I, the original intent of looking at 10% of expenses for 5% of the residents, we want to refine that a little bit to be, to be, have some more specific outcome intents behind it. And that's going to have to do, it also takes into account the demographics of our population that we're serving and also the impacts of rates on, on that demographic. So, so both of those things will be considered in that methodology that we're working on. Water and electric investment priorities. Any questions come up with that? That's Rod's area of expertise to help walk us through. We are on the water side, looking at some continued watershed investments. Most of the watershed investments at this point in time are O and M expense, not necessarily capital, but it is listed here because it is and has been of our work. And also we have a fee that we created that is, is still in effect for another couple of years. The priorities on water, really base level water storage, interconnecting some in-town transmission for operational flexibility and also facilitate the storage and the, we'll have a source development and treatment plant. And that's a, that's a big component in the, in the water's long-term financial plan and, and capital plan. It has, it does make a pretty significant difference and it, and it's a rate impact that roughly, roughly doubles the rate increase over the 10 years with, with and without that water treatment plant in it. We're still very affordable from a water perspective, but, and more results coming on that. We're, we're just including that as a priority as the assumptions we go into it. Electric priority, priorities, Carman Smith, the Lieberg canal mitigation. Eventually decommissioning costs start to, start to roll in, in the 2030s. Dam safety and some emerging issues there are important. And then really both water and electric are seeing some more increases in emerging compulsory work. Some of that is aging equipment, failures, for example, on the electric side. There's very specific reason for that. Eugene was growing in the 60s and 70s. A lot of infrastructure was put in in the 60s and 70s and it's simultaneously aging and reaching end of life. And so we, we are starting to see more and more failures and therefore the replacement, the compulsory replacement moving from that risk-based term to compulsory where we actually have to do it. If you don't, if you don't manage your risk, you eventually have to respond. And we're starting to see that both on, on the water side and the, and the electric side. And then some shared priorities, infrastructure, AMI and, and EES. EES being really the late replacement of our legacy IT systems with both the business continuity benefit as well as a strategic benefit when we start to look at new products going forward. So really what we're looking for this evening is, is some feedback on the assumptions that we're making going into this process and whether we missed anything, whether the board has questions or is comfortable around any, in particular, the last two slides or has any questions about the drivers. The next step after this in July, we come back with more details around the specifics of the financials associated with capital investments and also what that, what the results are. The initial results and assumptions of the long-term financial plan. Do you want to add anything?
Two, two things maybe. One is Lieberg, the mitigation costs for that. Some of it will be in the capital plan and some will be in O and M because not all of it's going to show up in a capital perspective. So when you get the capital plan breakdown, it won't have everything. The other thing Frank mentioned is electrification. Income is considered in the long-term financial plan, but we're not entirely sure what needs to be done from an expense point to that income. So these are the two things I jotted down.
President Carlson.
Let us clarify your question. Can you go back to the previous slide? Talking about the targeted age of system impacted at 2.5 into annual depreciation. Can you give an example of that? I'm not, I'm just not sure wrapping my head around what that means.
So I'll, I'll just use a transformer as an example. So the age of system is really the relationship between the total value of the assets and the assets that are fully depreciated. As you're depreciating those assets, you can drive that up or down based on your replacement rate. What we found in replacing that to really have an effect on the age of the system, the items that we're replacing are 2.5x more expensive now than when they were originally put in. So, so when you think about the relationship between what you're depreciating annually and what you have to do to replace it, it's 2.5x that. So that's in order to really impact age of system up or down, we have to spend at a rate that is significantly higher than what we are depreciating at.
That makes sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't know if that did a good job, but.
Quick clarification. Can you talk to your second point again? I've been rolling it over in my head and I, you're running right over me.
Which point on which one?
Rod's second point on revenue and not, not being able to write.
Sure. So as part of the assumptions made in the long-term financial plan now, so you've heard a lot of information from the electrification study and the IRP and the sort of the electrification curve. So, you know, we saw more electricity, right? So that's going to provide more income, so to speak. And so that piece goes into the, the income side. We don't fully understand what it'll take to realize that from an electric system perspective. What, what will need to modify the system, bigger transformer, bigger wire. I mean tip.
So we don't know how to, you said we didn't know how to recognize the revenue because on the budgeting side, most of these budgets are actually the cost side, but we.
We know how to recognize the revenue. It's real easy to collect.
Last thing I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's probably the way I phrase it, but in order to, you know, you can't get the income if you don't have the wire to hook it up to. There's a cost to have the wire to hook it up to if we need to make a bigger wire.
Okay.
We're, we're not sure that it's free revenue. So, and, and what I mean by that is sometimes you have to make investments to realize revenue, right? And there's a margin eventually that you're working on. We, we're starting to see revenue come into the outer years of the financial plan, but we haven't fully accounted for what we think might be the investments. Now that it, we might be able to mitigate through other programs and like demand response and some things like that. It's not just going to be, oh, a one for one, but that's something that, that, you know, we're, we're just highlighting. It's, it's not huge. It's, it's impactful and it's escalating, but it's reasonable. And so there may be some, some future costs that, that come into play there.
Okay. Over that. Thank you.
Clarifying questions on that point. Is that just on the electric side or is it both on the electric and water side? It sounds like we were talking about just electric side, right?
On electrification specifically.
And then when you say it's reasonable, is that like less than 10%, less than 25%?
It, it matches the original sort of estimates from our electrification study that showed mostly it's around things like electric vehicles where there's specific regulatory drivers such as the state of Oregon saying no internal combustion engines by 2035. You're starting to see certain trends that develop. I say reasonable, it's not something that would be overly impactful in the next five years worth of decisions. So again, the long-term financial plan projects out, but we end up making sort of one or two-year decisions from that. But it is something that you'll start to see. Well, revenue and some of these other things are starting. But it is something that you'll start to see. Well, revenue and some of these other things are starting to increase. And it, it seems like it's not a mandated full 100% electrification. It is ramping and it seems like it's, it's aligned with our electrification studies.
Couple of things. So on the wanted to depreciation ratios. In the, in the chart that we got in our, in our packet, we looked at water going to 4.3 because of the second source and those things. It had electric at 2, not 2.5. So can you explain that? If we're seeing the aging out, it seems to me it should be at least at 2.5, not a 2 going forward.
Yeah, I think what we did there was, was we put in, that's the actuals from last year's plan. So I'm not sure.
We don't have enough information to calculate the finals at this point.
Okay. Okay.
I think that was 2023.
Well, it had 20, so 2023 was 2, is what you're saying. That's, that chart is. Okay. Because yeah, I think those are going to be higher. Need to figure out that 2.5 isn't, especially with what you talked about, about the aging of the system. 2.5 isn't going to get us to where we need to be. And so let's try and hone that number to get it as, as accurate as we can. It's a guess, right? But.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's like, you know, I hate to go too far off on a tangent, but it is a average across the whole electric, which contains generation and T and D. So, so when you're targeting areas.
There's also a few other nuances. Commissioner Barofsky, if that's based on what you're depreciating today, you may have equipment that's already fully depreciated. And that's, that's the part that may, may not even, may not be in that calculation. So there's, there's some nuances to the age of your system versus how much, and to Rod's point, sort of peanut butter to cross there. It depends on whether you're talking about transmission or distribution or generation. There's some slight differences, but I think we understand your point there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a major driver in one of the denominators that you need to really have honed in. The second thing that I'm really encouraged by is that this is the first time that we're actually speaking to the costs of Lieberg. You know, in the last two long-term financial plans, we said, where's Lieberg? Where's Lieberg? Where's?
You'll get to see where Lieberg is on this.
Exactly. And that, that, that's encouraging because we've known it's coming. But this is the one that it's going to start to show up in, you know, it won't affect the rates probably early on, except for if we're pre-funding and that'll be part of it. But a lot of them will be, it's still in, this is 2024 to 34. So.
We, it'll, it'll actually sort of, so continuing. So if we're pre-funding, that means we're fully funding through rates, which will extend beyond the 10-year window. And so you'll get to see that this will be an early and long opportunity to, to finance that. So you'll, you'll see the windows of that and pre-funding will start. If, if we go based on the board's guidance from two months ago, I think it was when we had that discussion, that will start in 2024. So there would be a direct, there would be a rate impact next year.
And, and I, and I, you know, I'm encouraged by that. We're not putting our heads in the sand and saying, don't look behind the curtain like the Wizard of Oz, right? You know what's behind the curtain. But there's still some things behind the curtain that we're not looking at. Walterville is the second part of that. And, and I also believe that at some point, I'll put it in, in later on, but the sinkholes of the trail bridge is something that I'm, I'm concerned about because we heard about that about a year and a half ago. I need, I'd like to know what the progress on that is at this. Where are testing and stuff on that is because that could be a, a driver to this.
And that is a listed priority.
It is listed in there. And that's why I'm saying it's, it's finally starting to emerge as far as financial strengths. I'm glad to see these things are starting to bubble up. And I'm also wary that this is going to have a fairly substantial impact on rates over the next 10 years. You know, we, we've held rates down for a long time. A lot, we've got a lot of capital projects that are going to drive those rates. Some of it's O and M, you know, if you're talking about Lieberg, but second, second sources is definitely capital. And pretty more storage tanks is capital on the water side. And then the aging infrastructure on the lighting side is going to put a burden on our ratepayers. And so we need to be ready for that and be ready to move that investment, you know? It's, it's always the going back, resiliency against cost, right? We could stick with our old reservoirs and not be resilient. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to coming back next month with some initial numbers. And if they're too bad, we'll have Deborah Hart present it. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, Deborah.
I'm paying attention.
Oh, now she's, now she appeared.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure she was listed.
I'm awake.
I'll be right there, right behind you, Deborah.
Well, we're getting close there. Future board agenda is. Right, but in a new location.
What's that?
I said, right, but in a new location.
In a new location. I actually don't have too many comments. You, you have copies of it. We, in, in August, there are two informational items. One is, we have two guest speakers. One of them is to talk about the Lower Snake River dams and the impacts of fish. And the, and the other one, it's Mud. Yes, Mud will talk about some of their rental-specific programs that I think the board requested. So two guest speakers in August, both informational items for, for. Those are, those are new things that have been made in light, but I think other thing, everything else is pretty well scheduled. I know she had some specific questions.
Thank you for, for getting to.
And then Rod, any comments about the upcoming AI question?
One more, we're going to have a faculty team's going to go through the training that's going to come from the board. We came in and talked about setting it up and impact and streamed, I think. So laptops should be a fairly setting, a lot of interaction.
Can I just ask? So is there a possibility in a couple of months for an update on carbon relicensing and trail bridge? It's been a while since we've heard anything on the progresses of those. And it's going to be spooled up and running and when the campgrounds are going to open and that stuff will be something that I'd be, if there's, if there's room in, in a further agenda. I don't know if other people here just speak.
September. And that is. We can step over the summer for me. I just maybe asked, we had to, had to add that to September. Carmen Smith, Trail Bridge relicensing, project update and five minutes.
Or whatever you feel is appropriate.
You like dam safety and regular monthly updating bears and all the good maps and all that stuff.
I'm moving on to work. I had one thing that I missed during the opening session. I also attended the EEC the first Friday and the EWEB hosted. It was wonderful. But I, I was curious. So EWEB hosted this time, so we got invited to it.
I'll, I'll be sure and pass on, I don't know which organization's doing it. Pass on the invitations part of it.
But thank you. It's not just me. See, this building does funny things. Okay. All right. Excellent. So I guess if that is it, let's. Okay. Oh, that's true. Go home. Thank you.